Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for March 25, 2025. If you would rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, staff, would you like to do the roll, please?
Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Present.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
And Chairman Wiley.
Here. All right, good evening. For those of you who wish to speak tonight, please remember to address all comments and questions to the chair and keep your comments brief and on point, please. If you agree with a previous statement, simply indicate your agreement and then move on. To expedite tonight's meeting, I will ask anyone who thinks they might speak tonight to please rise. Testify the following. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you. You can be seated. All right, staff, the first item on our agenda is consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Any questions or concerns?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Do I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Okay.
Second.
And I have a first and second. Any discussion? All right, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley.
Yes. And the motion passes six to zero. All right, our first case tonight is case number 25100, rezoning at Zahn Avenue and Hawker Avenue. City, would you like to give us a report?
Okay. This is case 25110, the Zahn and Hawker rezoning. The applicant is the city, city initiated rezoning here to rezone properties owned R1 Industrial to R6 Single Family Residential. Is the star on the vicinity map, it's kind of hard to tell, but it's in the vicinity of where northeast of block or so, couple of blocks northeast of Truman Road and Noland. So here's the notification map showing the properties included in the rezoning and that were notified. Okay, as far as the zoning area, in this vicinity, we have mostly single-family homes and duplexes to the north, zone R12 and R6. To the south, at least there had been one single-family home until the other day, had a fire unfortunately, that zoned R6 and then there are R30 PUD apartment complex that is mostly, most of that is to the southeast there along Hawker Terrace. To the east, you have the church property, it's actually part of the rezoning, at least a portion is. And then to the west, you have industrial zoning as well. You have a construction supplier in an old school building there to the west as well as other commercial uses. The comprehensive plan visions this area as residential neighborhood. It is what it essentially has been in the past. It's what's the build environment there now and we would, and so we're requesting to eliminate that, that industrial zoning in favor of that single-family. So the property was first annexed in the city, being near the core of the city here way back in 1851, platted in 1867 as the Johnson's Edition second plat. And in 1910, the Zahn Street portion of this rezoning was called Lexington Heights. The church-owned property there on the east side that's included in this rezoning has never been platted. The residences in this existing commercial zoning district vary in era from the 1900s all the way up through the 1960s. Zoning these properties would retain the character of the neighborhood as a single-family neighborhood by aligning their zoning with the current use. This zoning supports the preservation and protection of this historic neighborhood in the city. No apparent historic and archaeological issues would come up with this rezoning, we can tell. It's not in the floodplain or in stream buffer. It's actually on quite a steep hill there. All utilities are in place and there's no CIP investments planned. If the rezoning were denied, the property owners and the buyers, of course, like with these other zonings we've talked about before, could have trouble obtaining mortgages and making improvements to their properties, so. So this is looking northward. Truman Road is to my back and both sides of the road going all the way up past where the truck is parked there at the top of the hill is the corridor we're talking about. And this is from the other direction, from the area that's already zoned R12 to my back, looking back down this industrial zone residential corridor. And then this is the corner there at Zahn and Dodgen, which is also on the line of single-family homes on the south side of that street that's zoned industrial. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning and ready to take any questions you may have.
All right, commissioners, any questions for staff?
When did the fire occur?
I read about it this weekend. The fire I'm talking about was that, as you recall, we had that earlier rezoning of that applicant a couple of months, month or so ago. And the zoning is passed the council, but unfortunately, the property was lost this weekend.
So the fire occurred over the weekend?
Yes.
All right. Any additional questions, commissioners? All right, hearing none. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone who'd like to speak against this case?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead and come up to the podium and state your name and your address. What are your questions, sir? State your name and your address.
My name is Caitlin Kendall and my wife, for whom I'm speaking on behalf of, is the owner of 519 North Hawker.
Okay.
And my questions are simply, I mean, I don't really have a position right now because I don't understand necessarily the consequences of this for the current homeowners, and that's what I would like to know. I mean, how is this going to impact homeowners in the area moving forward? And I guess that's the extent of my question right now.
Okay, great. I will let the staff address that.
So the situation right now is that these existing homes are on properties zoned industrial that have been that way since the 1960s and are legal non-conforming. However, if they, first of all, if they ever become vacant at some point, then after six months, they'll lose their legal non-conforming status for a residential use. That's one issue, but of more importance to homeowners who are there now is that, number one, if there, if there was a catastrophic destruction of their property, they don't have the proper zoning to rebuild, number one. And because of that, that causes complications sometimes with, with insurance companies as well as with people seeking mortgages or second mortgages on properties.
Does that answer your question, sir?
I believe so. So basically, my understanding is that this, that this would benefit current homeowners.
That is correct.
And that there's, is there any foreseeable downside for current homeowners?
Would you like to address that, Brian?
Unless they bought it as an investment property thinking they were going to build something industrial on the property, but the, the properties are small. They're not, you know, 50 feet, 40 feet wide, maybe well narrower than that. But they really don't have the size to actually be useful as industrial properties without being consolidated.
Does that help?
Yes, I think that helps. And, you know, based on that, I would be in favor of the rezoning.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak against? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to close the hearing. All right, commissioners, any additional questions? Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve case 25100-10.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second. All right, I will call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairperson Wiley.
Yes. And the motion passes six to zero on case number 25110. All right, let's move on to our second case. It is case number 25111, rezoning at 20201 South, excuse me, and 20221 East Jackson Drive. City staff, do you have a report?
Yes, so this is case 25111, which would be the site of the new municipal or Independence Municipal Commons Building, the Gihaw Building. Some people may still refer to it as they're at Jackson Drive and in Little Blue Parkway as the star indicates there on the vicinity map. Of course, the applicant is the city, city initiated rezoning, asking to rezone this property from O1 Office Residential to C2 General Commercial. So the notification area here is for the two lots. The larger lot is the one where the actual building is and then Gihaw had acquired a littler, that smaller lot to the northeast to expand the parking lot a few years ago and that's a parking lot parcel there. And then, so the all, basically the south side of East Jackson has been zoned Office Residential since the UDO and prior to that, it was the CRP1, which was similar, Office A number of the uses there are along that corridor are legal non-conforming now because restaurants and hotels hadn't, weren't in the, the UDO version. So then the north, we have the main shopping center of Hartman Heritage and it's owned two, C2, of course, it's made up of retail stores and restaurants. To the east, we have where the Menards and a number of outlots and the Quick Trip are located and that's, that's incorrect on here. That should be BP. It says C2. It is actually a planned business park that had a PUD that allowed some additional retail and restaurant uses within the, the business park uses. Again, to the west along the corridor is the O1, which are office suites. There's some condo offices there actually immediately to the west of this property. The comprehensive plan looks at this as a area for regional commercial, which it generally So the property characteristics, the lots were platted first in 1999 as lots, so one and two of the Hartman Heritage Center first plat. In 1998, the property was rezoned to CRP1 Planned Office Residential. The city adopted the UDO in 2009 and since then, these have been C1 Office Residential properties. Rezoning the lots to C2 will reflect the customer service and the public assembly uses that will be on the property as well as our administrative office uses and thus will align with the C2 zoning across the street in the Hartman Heritage Park as it already exists. The property, like I said, consists of two lots. Lot one is located on the south, southwest there and is entirely occupied by, actually, I got, I got the directionals confused here, the, right at the intersection of Jackson Drive and Little Blue Parkway, that southwest intersection, that's the north lot and that's the one that's entirely landscaping and in parking lot. And then to the southwest of that, the larger lot to the south is, is of course, the building and additional parking and landscaping. With the permit for the tenant finish, that's already been reviewed and approved. I have a, I have drawing here that shows some of the building entrance improvements, which is the major exterior improvement that has been done to the building or will be done to the building. As I'd said earlier, the Gihaw, the former tenant purchased the property to the north for expanding their parking lot, which roughly doubles the parking capacity of, of the entire site. This is outside of the federal floodplain and it's not in any stream buffer area and being so close to the Little Blue River, the property actually doesn't have its own on-site detention because that can quickly flow off to the river. Also, there are no CIP investments planned for the area at this time, although MoDOT's doing some improvements to the interchange just to the southeast right now. So looking at the site plan and landscaping plans, this basically shows the new landscaping that will be around the entrances that will be improved with this reuse of the structure. And then the overall site plan for the south lot that contains the building and its original parking lot is there on the right. So here's the elevations themselves of the new, of the canopies that would be added around the building at the entrances. So here's the existing structure. I'm standing at Jackson Drive looking to the south at the north entrance of the building. And then this is looking west, so we have some of our outlaw buildings right there for Hartman Heritage on the right. And then this is Little Blue Parkway and the restaurants that are in front of Menards that are immediately across the roadway from this property. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning and I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
All right. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Nesbit.
You say there's no CIP projects?
Not, not at the intersection there of Jackson and...
Well, isn't the whole thing a CIP project?
I, yeah, I guess, I guess the moving the city hall, there is a CIP project. I was thinking in terms of road, yeah, road improvements. I guess you're right.
Yeah, there's road project there too. They're doing lights and stuff there too. They're doing something there also at that intersection.
Yep, that, that's connected, I believe, with the...
No, it's, the city's doing their own project there too. I don't know, something, now, right now, they just got a pole there and they're waiting for the state to get done before they move on to their project.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so should we have that changed or not? That, that there is CIP projects?
Apparently there is, yes.
So we need to have that changed in the wording?
I can change that in the staff report.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? All right, is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this case? Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Seeing none. All right. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I approve for approval of case 25111, rezoning of 20201 and 20221 East Jackson Drive.
All right, I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All right, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairperson Wiley.
Yes. And the motion passes six to zero, case number 25111, rezoning at 20201 and 20221 East Jackson Drive. All right, we will move on to case number 25750-01 for a street name change, Necessary Road to Pop Warner Drive. Staff, do you have a report?
So as you said, case number 25-750-01 is an application for approval of a street name change from Necessary Road to Pop Warner Drive. The location of the subject segment is in eastern or southeastern Independence, south of 23rd Street, on the north side of Artimize Road and the south side of Little Blue Parkway, sort of on the eastern side of Little Blue Parkway. The area zoning of the subject segment has a combination of a multitude of existing zoning districts. Most of the area is vacant or surrounded by county parkland. On the north side of the subject segment is the East Gate Commerce Center, one of the phases of their, their project. And the west side of the subject segment as well contains a planned development, part of that East Gate Commerce Center. The subject segment is outlined in orange on the zoning map here and we'll move on to the property characteristics. Again, that subject segment is located between Artimize and Little Blue Parkway and where Necessary Road cuts through there. The area was annexed into the City of Independence in 1963. The subject segment is around 3,500 feet in length. It provides access currently to Little Blue Trace Trail and Heart of America Pop Warner Sports Complex. That ends staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions related to the request.
Roughly how much of Necessary Road will be remaining and how big is it? I mean...
Yeah, that is a great question. So around 2008, this, the segment of Little Blue Parkway was constructed, which bisected Necessary Road at the time. So you can see Necessary Road terminates at Little Blue Parkway and another segment of Necessary Road continues north and turns into Hawker, Hawker Drive, going, going west. Then that, that Hawker Drive connects with 23rd Street. I would say there's probably another 3,500 feet of Necessary Road on the north side of Little Blue Parkway. I could be wrong. It could be a little bit more than 3,500 feet.
So my understanding, it's not necessary on that other side, correct?
Yes, not required.
Okay. All right. Any questions, additional questions for the staff?
I have a question. Does the staff consider this change necessary?
So interestingly enough, only the properties on the east side of Necessary Road would be affected. The applicant's team has requested properties on the west side of this subject segment to remain addressed off Little Blue Parkway. So that would continue to affect the East Gate Commerce Center project, the North Point Development.
So anything else? I would like to, you know, someone's here to speak in favor of this. If you would come forward, share your name and your home address, please, and then anything we should know about your desire for a name change.
My name's Keith Folianni, 3312 South Coast, he's in Independence, Missouri, 6457. I live right up the street from the road, so I was born in 73 and I started playing Pop Warner football at 80, in 80. So if you all know and you all look old enough, that Don Reimel, the mayor of Independence, started it in 1967. So it's kind of a legacy thing to, really, the whole thing. So, you know, Pop Warner's a national franchise. We're the only sports complex in its kind. Joe Bolger sold us the land back in like 1988, I believe it was. So it has all been volunteered man-hours to put that complex in. We bring multiple cities to our city, so hopefully when, when they get done playing football, they spend money in our city. So I don't know, it's just, I just thought it'd be the, the kind of legacy thing, but then there's also the cool factor, right? So you go to Arrowhead, it's one, one Arrowhead Drive. So I just thought it would be neat. The national level is all for it. They think it's great. Pop Warner stands for not only teaching the youth, you know, football and cheer, but we also hold a standard for academics. So children cannot play if they do not at least carry a 2.0 grade point average. So that's, I mean, it's...
All right, thank you. Do you have any question, anyone have any questions for? Do you have any question, anyone have any questions for this fine gentleman?
So, and just, just so we're clear,
Yes.
So off Little Blue is still going to be, we want still Necessary Road. So that gets put into the East Gate for North Point and stuff. And when speaking with Mr. Pratt, who's the only other landowner, and I mean, the county owns a little section, but that's what, we just wanted to make sure. And actually, that little corner section, it states that it's North Point's, but it's actually Pratt's.
Okay.
That's right, adjacent to us, so.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for... All right.
That it?
All right, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, anything from anyone? All right, I am going to close this hearing. And I'm going to call for the, uh, excuse me, I would like a motion.
I make a motion and we approve case 25750-01.
All right, do I have a second?
I second.
Well, thank you, Virginia. All right, now I will call for the vote. Thank you, Gabe.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
No.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
Yes, and the motion passes 5 to 1. And that is on case number 25750-01, a street name change now to Pop Warner Drive. Thank you very much, sir. And thank Pop Warner for all the good that you do. All right. Anything good for the order tonight, anyone?
Dan and I happened to drive here together tonight and we had a discussion because when he went to do, look at the Hawker and Zahn building or home, he noticed his friend's resident had burned down. That owner didn't even know it had burned down. And as Dan was sharing this, the thing that really was evident is what we do here matters. It really matters. The timing, getting through the meetings, doing the work. And so I just wanted to encourage everyone, but also, you know, the diligence of the staff. We've had a pretty light agenda lately. And if there's more work that we need to do, don't be afraid to ask us to do it, so. Because we want to do what's best for our residents. So, but thank you. And if there's nothing else from anyone, have a great night. And the meeting is adjourned.